She just loves to love dogs. If we go to somebody's house, she smells like dog gall. Baby now, don't go with.
They want to make sure you guys shorten the meeting for them.
Yep.
Baby, I want to be.
Okay, time is now seven oh three, I'm gonna call the board of selectmen meeting to order for June fifteenth, and all three selectmen are present, town secretary is present. And secretary is inbound, but we got a tape recorder on, and we also have the tape on too. So we're also covered for documentation. Anything else we missing?
Two minutes, I have.
Alright, and so as the old business, we have the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? I could say they were passed out electronically, and a few corrections were made, but there weren't any major issues as far as I was concerned with the content. Um, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meaning a signature? Pass you a day first. And boss, I think I just kinda have a signature.
Sure.
While being busy is good. Okay, before we get to the meeting, the meeting, I'm gonna open up for public comment. And the only thing I ask is you, public comment, to state your name, so we can have it for the record. And I'll start with on this side.
Oh, Lee Martel, I'll wait till you end of the.
Okay, actually, Lee, sir.
I don't have anything.
Brian?
Not this one, huh?
Not this, I don't know. Okay, no public comment, but I think we'll have something reserved, I'm leaving in the end.
That's not the first time ever we have.
Okay, I'm gonna go right to the agenda, and Don, you're up.
Don Larson, Footlock Farms, and I'd like to present a hundred and sixty dollars more for the Reefs Across Dunbar Fund.
Kudos for your great efforts on that project, I think it's, we're looking at multi-year funding now, rather than the one-year funding.
Yes. I'm working on another full-time sponsors too, so that way we'll make sure that it has lots of legs. We'll be at the Fireman's, I'll have the table set up and everything at the Fireman's barbecue on the twenty-fifth, and.
Now, tell me, you're just trying to build an endowment for it, rather than fund it first?
Exactly, I've just tried, got a little expense in that, that I'll be turning into lean on that, but I want to make sure we have enough in the fund and that cover everything, so, but we'll have fundraiser there, fundraiser again at the Old Home Day, which is the nineteenth of August, and then we'll have the chili supper, which will help also bring in money.
I'm so moved.
Want to make a motion for it?
Yeah, I just ruled it.
Oh, you did? Yeah, okay. Have a discussion, all in favor? Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, that's great. Okay, now we also have a donation to the Town Hall Restoration Project.
This is well rehearsed. Uh, this is a check that the, our son-in-law would like to present to the Town Hall Restoration Project, from the three of us in the chairs. So this is from the two thousand seventeen.
As the chairperson of the Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Project, chairperson of the trustees, we accept your generous gift, and thank you very much for your hard work on behalf of the project. Thank you. I just wish I could fit this in my pocket.
Kudos to the entire project.
We've raised, uh, close to forty-one thousand dollars for our son-in-law on the common, over three years. Can you repeat that for me? Roughly twenty-one thousand. We've got two days of good weather.
Well, we pray for one, get two as a bonus.
Yes.
Can we ask a favor from the trustees to the sortment?
Go.
Can we go out of order of sorts, because we have some property here that we're, that we've accepted on behalf of the trustees, but technically you guys don't select enough to offer.
Once you come on up, and I'll explain what's going on.
Alright.
Thank you, guys, take care, thanks for coming.
That's what we have now. They're donating something else. We have three pictures of the maple tree that was cut down in the cemetery, and they're from All Three Seasons from Margaret Benatar. And she donated them to us, and these are what we'd like to present to the town, and we'll find a proper place to hang them.
Exactly, that's awesome.
And that's, so they're beautiful pictures, and we're gonna have an auction somewhere along the line, and this will be one of the items that'll be auctioned off.
Nice, that was the tree that was right out here?
Right over there.
Behind you.
Now, the thing is, I also understand that the thing is, there's a possibility of the trees still, the wood from the trees is gonna be sliced, right, as people could buy slabs as donations?
I do wanna know, because the wood was donated to the Wood Project.
Yeah, the Wood Bank.
Right.
So I don't know.
Okay, I heard that as a rumor possibly.
Yeah. But they were gonna make some spoons out of it, I know, on time, so.
I know it was moved, right, it was in the field.
Yeah, markets, marketplace.
It's in the transportation.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, very nice pictures though.
Yeah.
Very nice, thank you, guys.
You guys are the ones that have to accept property.
Okay.
On behalf of the town, we accept on behalf of the cemetery trustees, but.
Okay.
I believe so, right? I'll make a motion to accept it.
Well, second the motion. And I'll want to make the caveat, we'll accept the third, the third picture as a temporary motion, since it will be auctioned off, we'll only hold it for the, until the auction.
Yes.
And any other further, all in favor of accepting it under those conditions? Aye. Aye. Okay.
Thank you, guys, appreciate you going out of order for us.
No, thank you. Come on in, guys. Now we have, as a formality for accepting unanticipated revenues, the Old Home Day, every year goes around and either collects table fees and/or donations.
Currently, they've accepted sixty dollars, and typically in the past, the board has accepted the funds and allowed the extra funds to be used for that particular day, because they, things to run the event are getting costly, and they're limited with their budget, so whatever they can raise, it's up to the board to make the decision.
Donation?
Well, the table fees.
Right.
And deposits and that type of thing, so you'll be seeing more.
Okay, as it gets closer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we need a motion for that to accept that money then?
Yeah, and to award it to the Old Home Day for their budget, or for their expense.
So in other words, the town is acting as a pass-through to for that collection of this money?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I'll move that we accept the sixty dollars for the Old Home Day fund.
I can second that. All in favor, any further discussion first? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, money is so collected and donated, and will be passed appropriately. Okay, two weeks ago, we were talking about moving on to the Highway Electrical quotes, and there was a discussion about whether those. The exit pieces were in it, the question is, they were not. Okay. And on the spreadsheet, which I worked with, John provided some information, Lean did a great job with the spreadsheet, it's color-coded, let's just go through this, if you look at, first of all, off to the right-hand side, you can see in a beige, that's the twenty-five hundred dollars we already essentially approved. Okay. For the lighting upgrades. Okay? And then, across the top, we have All-Star, the, we have three other, we'll put that, the blue, put that to the side for now. So the thing is, in order, we have on the bottom, in the ground, we have one, two, and three basically quotes for the exit fixtures, from three different companies.
At the very top, the same column as Ernie Gang, and. Second column.
LJ, LJ Electrical and Light Tech. And if you look at the prices, if you, if you're asking me, why is one cheaper than the other, well, when they're out here doing their work, I think, and you alluded to that, it's more cost-effective, and that's why I think that the quote is so cheap on the inexpensive route, for Light Tech.
Which is what I was hoping we would get back, a good number from them to do.
So that would be one thing, that's one motion, I think, we need to make a determination of which one company we want to do the emergency fixtures, and I'm all in favor of Light Tech, albeit, Ernie's and LJ Electrical, I believe they're, they had, they were going a little bit beyond the common, the, just the emergency light fixtures, it was a little, it seems like their work was a little bit more than that. But the thing is, remember, if you recall, the town agent, road agent recommended that we didn't need it all, because it's not, building is not failing cold, it's more of a safety thing they're adding to.
And we already hit down the three emergency lights that are in Ernie's right here, so, in the inside building.
Yep.
That were wired to the panels, so he does have that included in there, so.
Well, see, if you look at those emergency lighting for Ernie Gang, it's fifteen seventy-six, and that's strictly for that, so the blue part is for what is required for the security system.
Okay. See, yeah, that's completely.
I was, I was only looking at that, that amount here.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the big difference is that it looks like there's exterior and interior, there's both exterior and interior.
And that's what I was alluding to, which.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, now let's talk about the blue, if recall, the security system required electrical upgrades also, and so, the one, two, and three in the blue refer to the electrical upgrades, and the most outrageous one was the one, All-Star with their own electrician they would bring in, was quite pricey. And.
No way you say that, that's not far off from Ernie's to me.
Okay, true, but the thing is, okay.
It's a hundred dollar difference or so.
Then LJ Electrical was a little more.
Yes.
But if you notice the man, one, the thing is, I think it had to do with the man lift was required.
So the left-hand column is the All-Star Security System for thirty-four sixty-four, the second column, Ernie Gang, is to wire just the, the security system for thirty-three sixteen, and then the LSJ Electrical to unlock, to install or wire the security system is forty-seven fifty, so that's strictly for, those two electrical quotes are to hardwire the security system. So we'd be looking at.
Thirty-three versus forty-seven, am I correct?
Correct.
Now. This is, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, this is not comparing apples and apples, this is the system.
This is system you approved.
And this is what's gonna cost, the one and two, we approved that system already.
So this is just the system, because it said labor additional cost down here?
Right, by additional contractor.
So we only have two quotes?
For the electrical, yeah.
For the electrical.
Yeah.
So we have, so this is the system.
Yeah.
Bob, you follow, as motion's okay.
Now, what's the note installation of wire conduit in black boxes?
He was basically saying that you need an electrician, I took this off of his quote, or his invoice, and that note is saying that you have to hire.
Same note, exactly.
You have to hire electrical.
This would be him or him.
Correct.
So that's the, what he's asking, with two additional contractors, either Ernie or LSJ Electrical.
Yeah, ask it on the question.
Sure.
You're talking about pulling power circuits or just signal circuits, because I can tell you right now, you do not need a licensed electrician that pulls signal circuits in the state of Hampshire, only power circuits.
These are power circuits too.
Yeah.
A little bit of both, but mainly power, he, the, let the, install by the All-Star Securities, signal circus, that's not an issue, it's the actual one-ten power that has to be placed, put in place.
You can deal with that every day with fuel systems.
Yeah, no, it's actually one-ten or one-twenty, whatever you're talking about, actual electrical work. Okay, so, getting back to the, the first, the first item is.
Let's do the emergency lighting first, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Light Tech for the three double-head emergency lighting supply for the emergency X, no, that's optional, so, the three double-head emergency fixtures with inside the building showing on the exits from Light Tech.
For the five hundred dollars.
Yeah, which would be added to the current, to the Light Tech contract for the light.
Other, yeah, other services, yeah.
Yep.
Now, do we have to include the man lift, what's the note from All-Star?
The one quote that we did have with the electrician, Ernie was nice enough to do his research, and he is including a separate cost of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
But when we, when I checked with Rich, LSJ Electric had not given us a quote.
Yeah.
So I, he had mentioned at one point that he will need a lift for his work, but to coordinate electrician and him to do the work at the same time, the company that he can get a lift for is a hundred and nineteen dollars a day plus a hundred and fifty dollars delivery, so that comes to two hundred and forty-five dollars.
So do we have to include that?
If we rent it for the week.
Do we have to include that in this?
For the first one, Light Tech, Light Tech has staging, they are equipped under their, their grant.
Alright.
It, when it comes to All-Star doing the work to get it up, and this would be an additional cost, I think if we decide to go with this quote, he can order it for us and bill the town, so that we can possibly keep it for the week if there's other work that needs to be done in the building, so if this only takes a day or two, and there's three days for the lift, it might be a time where we can utilize it to, you know, fix nails, check siding, you know, do a few things around the building on site.
So for right now, you don't want me to make it part of the motion?
No, I think you could just use it, not include the four fifty, but.
No, I'm not thinking of the four fifty, I'm thinking of the two forty-five.
Two forty-five, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So don't include that.
Do not include it, I, if the board is okay with it, we can just go with billing direct to the town.
Yeah.
And renting that lift for a week.
Yeah.
As an expense.
Okay, so the difference is now, we have Ernie's, and we have, well, LJ.
No, we're still finishing this.
Right, okay, understood, yeah.
I made a motion for the emergency lighting, for the three.
We're waiting on a second, we're gonna get a second.
Okay, highway garage.
Yeah, alright, let's get that out of the way, any further discussion on the emergency exit lighting at this point?
No.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of adding that five hundred dollars to Light Tech contract for the emergency lighting? All in favor?
Aye.
It's done.
Okay. So then I crossed off the other two boxes, because we're not going to address them.
Right.
Okay, and you want me to make a motion on the?
Well, the thing is, the question is, before we make a motion to accept any one, which one will we lean in towards, based on, I'm looking at these two, and we have LSJ, it's, Ernie's much, less, appears to be less expensive than LSJ.
If I can just bring your attention back to the town building maintenance budget, I don't have the worksheet for the allocation of the highway garage, but I recall it being in the high seven thousands, close to like eight thousand, so right now.
What was it, what was the total, twenty-five hundred and five hundred, right?
Three thousand.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Because we already did the twenty-five hundred?
Correct. But that's not included in the total expenses to date, so right now, we have remaining fifty-four thousand six ninety-five.
Now, when you say the twenty-five hundred lean, I'm not remembering that amount, even at twenty-five hundred.
The, I have it here, the. Okay, the contract for the grant was like seventy-four hundred?
Yeah, and a portion of it was.
Was a match from the town, this was a recommended additional work that was noted separately on that grant, and the reason
Okay, that was the.
For the road agent requesting it is because when they lose power, they want to be able to attach something to the generator.
I understood that, so when you're looking at your budget, we need to do the first amount, which was thirty-six plus twenty-five.
Well, we already did that one last week, the grant, we already did.
No, but what he's doing, he's looking at the aggregate, what's the aggregate amount spent already at Town Garage?
That's right, because you're going, you're going back to your budget now, so I want to know how much we have expended.
Alright, this is last week's quote for Light Tech grant, the town portion that you approved last week is three thousand four seventy-nine, forty-two, plus the twenty-five hundred.
Yes.
So this is what we were, we were deciding on.
Right.
We definitely decided on this, this was pending.
Yeah.
The.
That was the question.
So if we add this up, this up, and the five hundred, how close are we to our budget, is what I was getting at.
For the bill, for the highway garage? I want to say that we're right on the mark, but we, we put aside other
Right.
Work. So this would be over and above this electrical.
Right, that's why I wanted to maybe look at it a little harder.
If you want to look at this just a minute, I can go get that, I did not bring it, it might be worth just bringing the budget.
Yeah, just so we can see where we're at with it, because if we go over on one building, we have to go under on another building or something.
Well, that's, that's what will probably happen anyways.
And we had a small buffer in there, but I think some things are coming up, which are.
Right. So if I look, this one here is fire alarm systems, electrical install, conduits wired, boxes throughout the building as required by the alarm company, so we kinda need, we need this work for the alarm company.
Why can't go without the other, correct?
And did we, did we do that approval for All-Star?
No.
We haven't.
Oh, the, and you're wondering free?
No, not the.
No, the entire contract, no, we haven't approved it yet.
We haven't.
We just bought, the only one we approved were the ones for this building, they're already installed.
So that'd be the smoke detectors, the heat detectors, the strobes.
Yep.
Which we aren't required by law yet to do, from what we had heard last week.
No, right, but the thing is, I, the thing I think Bob was alluding to also, what's important is, we don't want to be stuck like another town, the town arrives for, and now we have no more equipment left.
Right, so I just wanna see how close we are to our budget, or where we're gonna be able to take money from along that budget.
I agree with you.
Okay, for the work that needs to be done at the highway garage, we've budgeted fourteen thousand seven twenty-seven, of which, he's looking for a new garage door.
Yeah.
Concrete cutting and material, and framing the door, so those three items came to seven thousand five hundred for those three, and I think it's a little bit high, but that's what he, we budgeted for that work, and then the rest was seventy-two twenty-two, so right now, we're at, you have it, right here? We're at, um, three, four.
Plus five, right?
So we're at sixty-four seventy-nine, of which we have seventy, seven thousand two twenty-two, we don't know what the price is for the.
My, my suggestion would be, because we talked with Jeff about it last week already, is maybe let Jeff get that door underway, and if he can do that project with some savings, then we could probably act on this and finish this portion of it up, because we're adding these two numbers together, basically, to get this job done.
We're talking about almost seven, close to seven grand.
Right, so depending with what we've got left, and what Jeff, you know, say he gets that done for four grand, we'll have three additional grand left.
Yeah.
Then we could do this part of the project without stealing from another department.
Okay, I did, I'm just looking at my notes now, at the very bottom of the last second of our budget process, we added highway two thousand sixteen quote thirty-three thirty, and annual monitoring for the electrical, so there's another three thousand, three hundred.
So we have just about the amount for the.
We have about ten grand for sixty-four plus thirty-three, yeah, almost ten, just under ten grand.
Seeing other of the opinion, at some point in time, instead of piecemealing projects and then having to go back, finish something.
Right.
You know, we're not even sure if we're gonna get a painter this year, but we're hoping to, you know, and that would be.
Is there any painting in that budget for the highway shed?
The highway, yeah, that would be, oh, painting, that's what we're, we're spending now, is the paint money, repair and paint exterior, seventy-two twenty.
Yeah, so, but, but that's, I mean, that's allocated to that building, so if you get something done, so you're not going back, and at the same time, and I'll make a recommendation, because I looked at the two numbers, it's a hundred and fifty-something dollars difference, is have the one contractor come in, so you're not having one contractor come in doing his work, someone else coming in following behind.
Oh, I thought, I thought that too, Bob, but there are two different things here, these are the two electrical conduit prices, and this is for the.
Security.
Security, I thought that too, Bob, I was gonna recommend that, just like you are.
Yeah.
But we're really looking at the two numbers on the left here.
Right.
These numbers.
No, the two in the middle.
In the middle, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
This thirty-four sixty-four was actually budgeted at thirty-three thirty, so it came in a little bit higher, he said there was something, he just put a more.
And this one here, Bob, is for the
Fire alarms.
The fire alarm system from All-Star, because I was gonna recommend to have them do the work as well, since they were already there.
Right.
But that's not the case, because they're not gonna do that conduit wiring.
Correct.
From the panel over, so these two quotes are what we're considering, one of these two along with this, Bob, so.
Okay.
So if you combine the two, we're looking at spending.
Seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Six, no, well, about seven thousand.
Well, you're going all the way to the right.
Yeah, well, don't forget, we gotta include the small man.
You've got thirty-four.
Thirty-four plus thirty-three.
Yeah, plus thirty-three, so, that's what we're looking at spending, Bob, and that's why I was hoping that we could, you know, maybe get another three thousand from Jeff's door or soda.
Maybe sixty-seven by the time he adds the man lift in.
And so this is a different, these are two different vendors here, where we already have Light Tech in there doing their complete job, along with those emergency lightings, and we approved the twenty-five hundred from them already, so these are two different vendors anyway, that aren't gonna be at the building.
Right, but that project won't go forward without an electrician.
This project.
That they have an alarm.
Correct, the alarm, correct.
Technically, these should have been a different color.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we haven't, we haven't approved the alarm yet.
No.
Correct.
So what I'm getting at is, you know, we're looking to spend just shy with the lift of under eight grand.
So Jeff can come in with a garage doors a little bit cheaper, we probably. So, Jeff can come in with a garage doors a little bit cheaper, we probably will.
That's what I thought, that way we're using all the highway money for the highway, whether it's painting or electrical or whatever, or the door.
Right.
So, I was just thinking if we could get Jeff to, um...
Chime in.
Start working on that door.
Give him the quotes, concrete.
Because the only thing I have is that we just do a little bit here and a little bit there, and we jump around, it'd be nice to complete a project and move on to something else so we can address the concerns when we get to another building.
On this sheet, there are actually two projects, there's one, the lighting project, which is done.
Right.
Or are voted on.
And I realize that, I realize, but, but again, having someone in there at the same time, getting it done, so it isn't six months from now, we're thinking about possibly doing something next year and, uh...
I'm going to agree with it too, I just don't want to tell Jeff you can't do his door, because we used to...
No, but Jeff, Jeff, Jeff did say...
But, 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 you did, you, you authorized a very good grant, this thirty-four hundred, over and above what's budgeted, because what, we, we don't have that in here.
But Jeff did say he was going to do some in-house stuff on his doors.
Right.
In-house labor on his doors.
Which comes out of his budget.
He's cutting the concrete himself, renting the saw.
Which comes out of his budget, really, and he's using his manpower, so...
Yeah, hello, hello, sorry to have you late.
So, so I don't care if you guys want to act tonight, but I was hoping we'd have the door numbers.
You know, do you want to wait for the next meeting and invest and think about...
That would give Jeff two weeks to really work on getting the prices that he needs.
And he, he may want to forego any painting or forego any change of garage door this year to get all the electrical stopped up too. Give him some, give him some input.
Well, the door, the door, I think he had scheduled and was looking at renting the saw and doing a lot of that work themselves to reframe that, so I don't think it's going to be seven grand that was put aside for it, so...
Yeah.
I think we should be able to do them both, but like, get some input from him, while he gave us that input last meeting.
But, then, if he, if you're, if you're comfortable with him not spending that much money, we could actually, actually do what we wanted to.
I think you might want to wait for the next meeting, you guys look at the numbers, but the other thing is just think about what direction we're going in. If you're going to just do patch work from one building to another, then we do that, if we want to complete a project, so we're not looking at the same, different, maybe different, uh, as far as security, but looking at the same thing down the road.
Yeah.
No, I think that's good, I think if we can get Jeff to maybe get the, like, the garage door quote, he can get a quote on that door, he knows what the size and the rent and that stuff, so we get a, we'll get a firmer number from Jeff for our next meeting and then we can make a decision then.
And, and the goal is not to pay Robert with a building.
That's what I was hoping, if we could avoid it.
Okay, so moved, I, I think we're on consensus, we can table that to, uh, the following meeting.
So, we, we are still going with that five hundred, so Lighttech will finish their job.
Right.
Yep, I'll get that after them, oh, um, can I get you to sign the revised?
Lighttech contract?
Yeah.
I think I have it.
Three thousand dollars.
Do you have it? Which one are you looking for? Lighttech.
I think I have the old one here.
I think it's, uh, light, attached lighting agreement, uh, from, uh, Jody Lucy.
Does it have, um...
Has one page here. Hey, is that the one you want?
Oh, yeah.
I have it written down.
The room was full when we first came in.
Oh, it's right here, it's three thousand dollars, so this is the single page for the twenty-five hundred dollar electrical work and the five hundred dollar exit lights, emergency exit lights.
Yeah.
And you wanted it written in the quote, so that's the revised one.
Which is the one we just approved, right?
Right.
Correct.
Which is the issue? We have a lot of money we've got last week, so do we need to sign it?
Uh, I think, uh, just I will sign it.
Okay, I'll work on that.
It was approved on June fourth, uh, last week.
No, the last meeting, yeah, I say correct.
I was here without you guys last week, you know, I came in, gave me a chance to sign all the checks, so...
At least you had a short meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, we're going to go right onto the, uh, if we call the hazard mitigation plan, there was an email sent out, they apparently accepted the hazard mitigation plan.
Correct.
And so, um...
This is a basic, um, step in adoption, and Stephanie Alzine is requiring that you sign four copies, because there's the state...
Bless you.
Thank you.
Central Hampshire, the book, and another copy of not exactly, but she asked me to make sure you sign four copies of the acceptance, if that's...
Did you see the approval in the email?
Yeah.
So, uh...
So FEMA has accepted our application, our amendment.
Which is the same one that we reviewed.
Yeah, and we, we approved it already, so it's just a matter of just, uh, working on it, signing it now.
If you want to inform the public of what you're doing.
Earlier this year, we, uh, we approved the town hazard mitigations committee, uh, the plan to rewrite, rewrite the plan and draft the plan, and the reason for having this plan is that if there's a disaster, in order to qualify for federal monies, and such as FEMA, we have to have prudent steps, uh, plan organized and written, that how is the town going to react to such, to such hazards. And we have to draft this plan, submit it to the, to the state, to the federal government, and it's approved, and now that it's approved, that if we ever, we have a hazard or something happens to this town, we have a plan in place, and by having this plan, we meet one of the check marks of FEMA that we can apply for grants. Okay? And so all we're doing now is, uh, since they've, uh, we're signing it to make an official contract, since they approved it. We're going to put it on here, we're going to...
Fifteenth.
I'm going to have Dave sign it for us.
You got a few more?
Yeah.
Be quicker, because I got to send this back to him.
So, once this is in final print, we'll make sure that we have it available on the website and, um...
Should we have all trying to copy this?
We will, yeah.
Okay.
They'll insert the signature page and all the, um...
Mike, you put twenty-fifteen?
Twenty-seventeen.
No, you didn't.
It looked like twenty-seventeen to me, if you look like that, like that, I hack it.
How many more did you do that?
Six, well, when you always see a guy in jobs. Okay.
Six, sometime I'll go back one either, never two.
There's a fifteen, there's a nine. Um, before we, uh, this plan goes out, please have the selectmen updated on it, I'm not going to, I do not approve that to go out at all, two of the selectmen names are corrected on that.
Correct, and that, that's on Steve's part, you should have printed off the, the...
That's the second time I've asked Steve to print that.
Yeah.
We did catch up a few weeks on exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we should have done that, because the one that we have in the computer is, does have the correct names on it.
Okay, if, if that's just a hard copy for office copy, it's fine, but the, as, as we should print up a, uh...
Print it out to the one?
Yeah, it's too easy. Right there, sir.
Put it in two hundred doses.
Well, just keep it in one of the journals.
Still last week. That's why I didn't make yesterday's evening.
Hey, John, just to bring you up to date, I'm glad you, I, I was trying to fill in for you here.
Oh, thank you.
I didn't think, I didn't think you were going to be here.
I didn't think I would either, but...
Okay, just to let you know that we approved the twenty-five hundred dollars for the additional lighting.
Right.
For the, for the garages, and to include the five hundred dollars for the emergency lighting.
Bringing the total to three thousand.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And I have...
Plus their original quote of thirty, thirty not working.
Yeah, whatever, yes.
Yep, okay, good. So, they're, they're all done as far as the highway garage goes.
I'll scan this to them tomorrow.
Excellent.
And tell them it's a go.
Yep, I just wanted to check on that, so, so thank you for telling me, now, right, now I have to go and feed the animals now.
Okay, but I think, uh, thank you for your hard work in getting that done, as a volunteer, we, that was a lot of work, a lot of legwork you did, appreciate it.
Also, the, uh, the vendors do a good job on it.
Yeah, we, we were just a little bit disappointed, I know Dave is, he's, he's like, he wanted those emergency lights included in the original twenty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, I would have. But you pick your battles.
Yeah.
We get a good number on it.
Yeah, it's very good.
Okay, good.
Thank you, John. Good evening, okay. All right, uh, next thing on the agenda is the, uh, painting quotes for the town hall buildings to include the library in this building here. I had the pleasure of talking with three different painting companies, I've asked them to seal bids, and, um, we got three sealed bids, and we can, we can open them now and take a game round, so I'm going to let you open one, Bob.
So, this spreadsheet's not color-coded.
I see.
We'll make it easy.
We're going to fill it in as we help?
Correct, and I just, I separated it by building one, building two, because they did, you said that you were asking them to do the library and, or parts of it along with the same on the...
Right, it's a similar type thing on this building. And the thing is, I, I also explained to them as I went along, I said that I like to get a quote for the, uh, maybe two sides and maybe the whole building, and and I explained to them that funds may be encumbered, so the project could extend to the next spring. Just want to see if, that was a Lighttest I heard about.
Yeah, I see, cool.
Okay.
Okay, um, well, Scott, I guess we can just take a game round, then we'll do, just talk about one at a time or...
Yeah, why don't we look at the numbers?
Okay.
Each one of you has a quote, so we can go ahead and mark the numbers on the sheet, then we can look at the sheet and review the quote a little closer.
Take a minute to just read, sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Have you seen it this quiet?
Hmm?
Have you seen it this quiet?
Can I fill you in with some of the, um, general government budget for these items?
Yes.
Uh, library building, we, uh, allocated twelve fifty for lighting, are we going to be doing any lighting over there, did we improve anything over there? I don't think so, um, we actually budgeted two thousand for painting lower half. We had budgeted, uh, five hundred dollars to raise the air conditioner, I think we resolved that, it's not going to be spent. We, um, budgeted thirty-five hundred dollars for, to replace four water tanks with two and install, that came in at eight hundred ninety-five dollars less, so that's eight, at eight hundred ninety-five there. Um, in this building, we, we budgeted a paint exterior, three thousand dollars.
Put this one in here.
Yep, um, we budgeted twenty-eight sixty for chimney repair, I don't know that we've looked into that, um... I think we did spend or authorize nine hundred, how much was the roof ridge cap? Six, six ninety-five, something like that? So, there's, um, twenty-two hundred dollars roughly there that still hasn't been spent. And then the bark mulch for town common, the garden club did say they didn't need it this year, we had budgeted five hundred, so, well, till we have... I have ten thousand three forty-five.
Maybe we could buy a can of paint?
Yeah.
Great.
Have we included the door replacement on that library?
That's a separate line item.
Okay.
Uh, let me see. Building generator.
We actually, I do have somebody to quote in that door for us.
No, that's not on the budget list, but it's a priority right now, so...
I'll switch a minute? No.
Okay. We'll give the totals for ours.
All right.
Our own buildings here, I guess.
I double-checked my edition, I have twelve nine fifty is what those items are coming up to.
All right, Dave, I'll let you go first if you're ready.
Now, when you're talking about this building, did you just talk about that end for them or this entire building?
The entire building.
You did.
So, this one, with the exception of the first contract, the first contract one I gave you was aside.
Okay, I have the, I have reliable quote, uh, for reliable quotings.
Quotings.
This is for which building now?
We're going to talk, uh, we're going to do building number one, is this building?
No, this is building two.
Building number two?
Okay, so this is libraries, building one?
Yep.
And town offices. Okay.
It looks like to me the total quote, um, for all exterior painting and repairs on this building is fourteen-four.
And that's the town offices?
Yes, that's correct. Now, going back to building number one, he did it by sides, because it looks like on the east side and the west side, there's substantially more... it looks like on the east side and the west side, there's substantially more work because of the railings and the entryway on each side of that building, on the east and the west, it looks like.
Okay.
So, the east side, and we'll add these up, is twenty-six-six-hundred. The west side is twenty-four-three-eighty.
Twenty-three, say again?
Twenty-four-three-eighty.
Twenty-four-three-eighty.
The north side is fourteen-seven. And the south side is fourteen-seven.
Do you wanna look at them separately, or do you want me to add them up, or?
No, let's keep them separately, because the thing is, I have on my.
You gave us a total on that job of eighty-thousand, three-eighty. So that's fifty, sixty, seventy, yeah, eighty thousand. Are his sides labeled incorrect? No, I guess north and south, yeah.
North and south are small, do you wrap them?
Yeah. Okay, so that's my quoting reliable, and it looks like he did a lead paint test on it. And he has determined that he's gonna treat the building as having lead paint, and he is gonna take care of tarping and all the chips that fall down, cleaning up the entire chips, priming it, and giving two coats of paint on it. Two coats of top coat, Sherwin-Williams. The only thing I didn't like about his quote that I saw there, and I'm not positive on this, but he's using what looks like a good primer, but it's a water-based primer. And I know on a primer, you can use an oil-based primer and you can still put latex on top of it. But once you use a latex primer, you can't put oil base on top.
I don't think you can get oil base, I mean, in that quantity anymore, can you?
Oh, really?
Yeah. Of course you can.
Yeah, which is always the best way that I've known to do it, but, so that's the only thing that I would look at, and I don't know what this test includes here, but I'll take his word for it. He tested it for lead paint, I guess what, if we accept this bid, we'll look at that later. Okay, who do you have, Mike?
I have, I have just a title restoration.
Title, so you're the third one over?
Yep. And just, his was a little bit abbreviated. He only gave me quotes for the north and south sides as a, as a start for this year.
On that building?
On the library building.
Okay, so the north and south side.
And he broke them down. He, I'm gonna say total cost for the project is fourteen-nine-hundred with both sides, north and south sides. He was gonna do, he added in there into his.
What is his, give us the sides, since he has them.
He has them for, eighty-one for the first side.
Which is the north?
North side, eighty-one layer. And sixty-six-fifty, if he added in the, the second, the south side.
Sixty-six-fifty.
Right. The only thing is, he wanted to do accents, and the thing is, he felt that the dentil work of the corner blocks, he liked gray accent to flow with, to flow with the slate roof would be a cool thing to have. But I think as me talking with other people, who said that, keep it white the way it has been historically, don't mess with it. And so, that might be, it might lower the price a little bit, but essentially it's about fourteen-nine.
Oh, can I, can you give me those prices again, 'cause I come up with fourteen-seven-fifty, so.
Okay, the thing is.
Eighty-one-hundred for the north side.
That's the same thing.
And then sixty-six-fifty for the south side?
Right.
That comes to fourteen-thousand, seven-fifty.
And he wants to do accents.
Is that why?
I think it's, accents are in there for, it should be, he wants eight-hundred dollars for the accents. It's kinda hard to. No, adds outside sixty-six-fifty plus accents, eight-hundred dollars, but no extra cost to do the other two aprons. Total is, I'm sorry, seventy-four-fifty. So the thing is, that's, the first number is with the accents, so with.
What's he calling an apron, Mike?
If you notice the, the little apron on the, on the ledger board on the very bottom, he was gonna throw that in free words, with all the paints peeling off it, right off, three-hundred-and-sixty degrees around the building. He was gonna do that this year, he offered to do that this year.
You're talking about the water table board there?
Where, if you go all the way down to where the, where the cement is.
Yeah.
There's a little ledger board that comes off like this.
Yeah.
That goes along. If you go three-hundred-and-sixty degrees around the building, it's all peeled. He was willing to do that at no charge.
Wouldn't you be painting that when you did a side of the building?
Right, but he was gonna do all three-sixty the first year.
All the first year.
All right, one more time. Sixty-six-fifty, it's, he's adding eight-hundred dollars. Sixty-six-fifty, uh, each side, okay? I stand corrected within that.
Sixty-six-fifty each side?
Yep.
Okay.
My numbers are off, because he wanted to do the accents for more money.
Well, I saw you, eighty-one-hundred, man.
Right.
Totally for eighty-one-hundred for painting, no peel and wipe, he has.
Exactly, but the thing is. Right, and six-fifty, and six-fifty to, I'm sorry. All right, sixty-six-fifty plus accents, eight-hundred dollars, okay? Forget that eight-hundred dollars, so sixty-six-fifty.
Yeah. Dental work and corner blocks.
We don't want that. And six-fifty to, to same clock, clean, prime, finish coat, other three aprons. Oh, it's six-fifty to do the, if we wanna do the bottom boards.
Yes.
Okay, and then adds outside for the same amount of money.
Yeah.
No, forget that eight-hundred dollars for the, for the, okay, to do two of the aprons.
Two of the aprons.
Total of seven, uh, total of.
Seventy-four-fifty included the eight-hundred.
Right.
And this total included the sixty-six plus.
What's a six-fifty?
Plus the eight-hundred, so you wanna stick with sixty-six-fifty.
Six-six-fifty. That's what I have.
And then, you wanna add the six-fiftieth to that apron all the way around. So it's basically you gotta add that.
Six-six-fifty. Yep.
So it's thirty-three-hundred plus six-fifty?
Yep.
What did you say?
Sixty-six-fifty times two with six-fifty added onto it.
Yeah, which would be thirteen-nine-fifty.
Yeah. That would be correct.
And what's, what I found about.
For two sides.
For two sides.
And the apron.
And the apron. What I find interesting, he's having, he's having a ten-year warranty, a peel warranty on his, eight-year no peel warranty, except the aprons.
Yeah, but he's adding.
That's, if you do the recommended, if you do both sides this year, he's savings at least six-fifty, because he's not gonna charge us for the aprons or something like that.
Oh, okay, so it's actually gonna be less than six-fifty if we do both sides?
Right.
Oh, okay.
So recommend doing north and south sides this year, back in, savings at least six-fifty.
Okay, so let's deduct six-fifty out there so we're accurate, so we do two sides.
So we're back to twelve-thousand.
Thirteen-three-hundred.
Thirteen.
Thirteen-three.
Right.
Thirteen-three-hundred. Wow, we bent that one right up, didn't we?
All right, Bob, you're on.
Oh, okay, I wanna say here?
Hang on, hang on, I wanna do building, building two. We had a quote for one side, one side only, the front side.
I'll let you in on that.
Which is?
Yeah, by the, it'd be the west side. Eighteen-hundred dollars.
Okay, one side.
That's the west side.
Do you just need to do the dog's system?
Yes.
Okay.
Now you're a lot.
That's it?
That's it.
Mike, did he give any types of paints or primers that he was using?
He just said it'd be.
And was it one coat or two?
Two coats, so it'd be oil, oil, no, just a, um, oil-based primer.
And one coat?
And a finished coat.
So just out of fairness, I wanna make a note that there was two coats after the primer on mine.
Okay.
My bid. Just to make, just to make.
What was that again?
After the prime coat, there was two coats of Sherwin-Williams on top.
Water-based primer and two coats of paint.
A water-based Sherwin-Williams on top.
This one's oil-based with one.
So let's make a note so we know, so there's three coats here basically, and two on this one.
And brush, spray, you put brush, this is, I'm just using spray.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
So reliable coating, coat, coating is using a sprayer?
No, brush.
Brush, okay. And then title is using brush and spray?
No, uh, he'll be using sprayer for the main, for the main big areas, yes.
So you got two different bids?
Two different ways.
But also one is treating it as lead, and didn't hear anything in that one, right?
Treating it as lead.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lead containment.
Okay, sorry, didn't hear that.
Oh, that's all, that's in there.
Spray, though, is not as, as good as brushing on.
You know, I interviewed both painters, and the thing is, you know, it's like buying a used, a used car.
Of course.
Oh, spraying is just as good as, you know, and I'm no painter.
What do you think about spraying and back brushing right after you spray, back brush right afterwards?
Well, yeah, except for spraying, you lose a lot of it.
Right.
A lot of it does not stay, a lot of it bounces off.
Okay.
But typically, the best way to do it is either brush it or roll it on and back brush. Rolling it, you're just applying it, then you back brush, you know?
And it's pushing it into the.
Right, you gotta back brush it, it doesn't work, if you spray it, it's not.
This one here, that with the spraying is actually doing house right down the street.
Yeah, right, this is spraying that one, yeah.
Yeah, this one you told me to get.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, visit it in four years, you know? I, I've done a lot of that too, believe me, I've gone right off that spraying.
It doesn't penetrate the wood.
I've let, I dumped the spray gun and I've gone back to hand manual application.
Since you've taken part of the comment, sort of, can I try and?
No, absolutely.
Did you guys consider the bid policy when you did this? Because anything over ten thousand, the formal sealed bid is used for purchases, an invitation to bid must be posted on the town, Dunbar, website and bulletin board for at least fourteen days prior. Yada, 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 bid specifications required approval of course. If you guys had done the due diligence, put out a bid with all the things listed out, what you want done, you would have been able to compare apples to apples, not apples, oranges, whether it's water-based, oil-based, brush, spray, and you would have everything listed out where you want it.
I think is, I agree with you.
Well, it's, that's the policy of town.
Policy, but the thing is, I think these bids are coming in much more than we ever anticipated.
Yeah, we didn't expect.
Well, maybe feel someone out for us and say, hey, what's the going price, and you get a raise.
This may be, this may be our first blush at it.
Yeah.
And, and so we may not make a decision based upon the information we have tonight.
I have to tell you, what, depending, some of these numbers, he's correct though, is it's come out way beyond what the anticipation was, you know, for just taking care of those sides. 'Cause I'm looking at this one, I got one that comes in underbid, but I gotta tell you that the rest of this one here.
Well, yeah. So, our intention wasn't to go over that budget, Brian, but now these are coming in higher than I expected, so now we'll probably take a second look at how we want these bid, because.
We may have to put our request for, official request for bids, follow that policy, but the thing is, I think overall, we've been, we're being blown away with the numbers.
And at least they need to match the number of coats and how we want them applied, and then we can.
Right, now you got, you got oranges, apples, and apples.
Absolutely.
You have to set the specifications, right?
Yeah, that's what the request for bid went after, delineating.
Because, you know, the bid I got for the library, this is gonna have to go off the bid, it's gonna have to be done the proper procedure, 'cause I don't think anybody.
Well, let's go over, let's go over your numbers, let's finish.
So I'll give you the numbers and then you'll get an idea.
Language, all you have to do is come up with the specifications, slide in and send it out.
Yep. Number one is this one treats it also as lead, they cut the ground and do that, they don't do any sanding, they'll be scraping if they have to do anything, but again, the front and the rear of the building are ten-thousand-five-hundred, that does include.
Are we on this one or in the library?
The library.
So the library, we're doing the front and rear?
Front and rear is ten-thousand-five-hundred for each one, not including paint and materials.
Wow.
The two sides are eight-thousand dollars apiece. That doesn't include paint and materials, that's to be determined.
No painter materials?
No painter materials, yeah, so.
Can you give me that price here, the size?
The two sides are eight-thousand.
Each?
Yeah, and the front is ten-thousand-five-hundred, and the rear is ten-thousand-five-hundred. That's what I'm saying, is, you know, when you're looking at, and you see just a few peeling places, it, it ends up being quite a bit more than that, 'cause the total is forty-thousand-five-hundred guaranteed for four years. Guaranteed that he'll hold that price for four years.
Forty-thousand-five-hundred, Bob, with no paint?
No paint, no painter materials.
So you're gonna go to this house and sleep.
So, so that building there, definitely, you're gonna have to put out a request, you know, and you're gonna have to have a meeting on.
Yep.
As far as the town office building, he's got six-thousand dollars for labor and a thousand dollars for paint, and to paint the whole building is seven-thousand dollars, and he did say that there was no primer, so they're gonna scrape and paint those areas, 'cause there was never any primer applied to it.
And that's all four sides?
That's, that's the whole building.
Total?
Yep.
Can I ask you dumb questions?
Try me.
Probably just go for bid for the whole, you know, the library, this one, and the town garage, and break them out separately, so you have them, and then you can pick and choose what you wanna do, or how you wanna do it. And that way you have prices for everybody.
Yeah, well, first of all, we have to, I think we're spot on, we can't compare apples and apples today, we have different. The prices are much more than we ever anticipated, we never budgeted even, we never, a budget, we broke the budget. We have no money this year to do any of these bids, it's really limited if we can do anything. We're gonna have to look at this and probably formalize this process a little bit more.
Really, formalize and, and send it out for us thing next year and.
Yeah. I'm under the same impression, Lena, though, if we can get it brushed or at least sprayed and back brushed, I, I would be happier than just a spray job, 'cause they don't seem to last.
At least play the white paint with a brush.
Brush?
Well, actually, you know, I'm gonna say that for the li, for the town office building.
It's reasonable.
You know.
Seven grand for the whole building?
It's seven grand for the whole building, so, you know, that, but wouldn't stop, that building over there.
What I would like to do, Lena, is give these all back to you, and if you could make copies for us, just so we can read thoroughly through them.
Yep.
And then we can make a spec up that we can.
Spec up the model.
But we'll keep this budget, and I would like to give my bid back right now.
Does anyone painter that's uninterested in doing this, because that'd be the person to talk to.
We need, we need a disinterested painter who has got.
Exactly.
Who's a.
Or retired painter that's got a lot of experience that can tell you exactly how you should approach this.
We've contacted several people that were too busy to even give us a bid. You know, this is the busy time of year for these guys.
What we need is someone who's got more retired professional experience in painting.
Exactly.
Because we need a, we need a consultant.
So you're saying that being, all of these bids are gonna be put on hold if you want, look at all three together?
Yeah, but if you make copies of them for us, we'll review them and then we'll. There may be some work that we're able to do, we're just not gonna be able to do the majority of it.
Even, but even as we talk about the, the town buildings down, you know, is it whether it be stain or if it be paint at the town garages, at this point, I've learned, my, my thing I've learned is, you just, you ask three painters for three quotes, they're gonna give you three different ways of doing it, spray, brush, and whatever, and then.
That's common with any type of.
Right, but, but what we need to do at this point, I, I think it's spot on, we have to, at this point, with this much money we're talking about, this is exactly what we want done, this is the type of painting we use, this is the type of primer we need used. We wanted to determine that.
This is how you wanna apply it.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah.
This is how you wanna apply it, you know, application method, exactly.
You have experience in painting?
I've done a lot, but I would not put my name on any.
No, 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 but what I'm getting is, you couldn't, you wouldn't be interested in looking at our, our quote, our bid?
I can look at it, look it over.
And see if there's anything that will miss it.
And offer whatever advice or suggestions I might have, but.
Problem is, you need someone that has that experience, you know?
In the trades.
That has an idea of the square footage, how much a gallon of paint's gonna cover.
Yeah, well, that, that's not so, so strict, but it's just, again, you said a couple of things. One is, what do you wanna use for materials?
Yeah.
That's the big key, and how it's applied, that's another big key, then how, you know, are they gonna, are they gonna scrape or sand or what? You get, you know, you have to, this building you just said doesn't have any primer, so you wanna make sure that this building gets, make sure you get. You get, you know, you have to, this building you just said doesn't have any primer, so you wanna make sure that this building gets, make sure you get cleaned and primed where it needs.
As long as these buildings are, you probably wanna make sure you put in the thing to treat them, make sure they treat them as lead, so...
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right, because some parts, some parts might have been redone, they're nice, no lead, but that's, this other section is all lead, you know?
Yeah, if I may, just before I figure my thought, just to give you a heads up, DES controls that on one, lead abatement and such.
Yeah.
So you may have to take and insert some of their rules, or at least have them consult those rules, because, uh, especially some lead are now, uh, all those things that are, you know, whenever you're doing any type of renovation, especially a public building, you have to take and make notifications, like your health officer and so forth like that, so you can have that stuff.
What division is that again?
Environmental Services, DES.
All right, so, table any decision on any painting, we have to develop some specifications, we have to find a disinterested, someone a disinterested subject matter expert. Who's willing to talk about painting with us.
And you still wanna review them, because there's one or two potential...
I would like to read through them early.
Yeah, and they would, they will give us some guidelines as we develop our specifications. And, uh, and I, I wanna thank the bidders who, if they listen to this, I wanna thank them for taking the time to meet with me, and I think the fact they met with me, I was, I was kind of them, especially in this busy season, and they gave their best effort, obviously, I did not have the correct information to give them, so we could compare apples and apples. And so it's been an order process for, I think, the board here, and I think the price shock, uh, I mean, that was, uh...
I kinda figured that building was gonna...
I figured it would be a whole war, you know?
Well, what if they, eighty thousand?
The other thing though, Brian, is the state doesn't have any regulations as far as containment, but they have procedures, is that you could follow, but they don't mandate it, and they almost tried to pass a lead paint abatement bill, this time at least to affect landlords?
Yep.
And they got shot down again, so, you know, we're one of the states that unfortunately, they don't realize that this is more serious than it is, because lead dust isn't...
Oh, absolutely.
The greatest thing.
I, I, I seem to recall that all, all the painters claim they have lead certification.
Yeah, they gotta be lead certified now.
Yeah. Which is a, obviously, rule, uh, specification number one on our, uh, list for bids.
Part of HUD standards too, you know, for lead paint.
Okay, any further discussion, we have work, work in progress to do. And I, I have a feeling that this year may be a tough year to do the painting we needed.
I know, this one, this one's more money to get electrical, though.
Well, and the other thing too is, I mean, worst case scenarios, you may get one building that costs less done, but...
Well, you've always got the, the, uh, the, uh, Jets building.
Yeah, yeah, but the thing is, less of one here, again, we gotta, when, when we ask for bids on that...
Yeah.
Of course.
This is, you know, rule one, this is what we want, what we gotta coordinate, exactly what we want.
Treat it like it was your home.
We're not gonna let...
Somebody comes to your home, they, you're gonna tell them what you want.
You gotta set me up with that. But it was a learning, I think if anything, it was a learning and experience, in the sense that, uh, we're gonna, we wanna do it right for the town, and we don't wanna just do it haphazardly. I think it's the, the big thing, I mean, oil-based primer, latex primer. One, one might say, one works just as good as the other.
They can say whatever they want, but if you use an oil-based primer, you can either use oil base on top or latex on top, you cannot do that, once you do a latex primer, you're stuck with latex.
Latex is nothing but plastic that peels off after a number of years, usually.
Can I make a comment here?
Sure.
My experience with my house, the first time I painted it, I did oil, it didn't even last two years. And I found out, talking with people about painting, they said, the oil-based paints of today don't have lead enough, they don't, he said, they said, actually said, the latex will hold up better than oils.
It's just the primer we're speaking about, not the top coat.
The primer.
You missed the topic, you missed the whole quest.
Well, they, they gave me, I had a four for my house for twenty-two thousand, needless to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it myself.
Doesn't sound too bad after what we got, go ahead. Who did you have? Maybe we should call that one.
I'll ask, ask Eric, I mean, he may be, wanted to be interested.
We're, we're, we're gonna move on now, please.
He's expensive.
What are we going on to, uh, you get public comment here next on your agenda?
Oh, we've been having public comment, but I think it's open for public comment. Leo?
I do have something. Uh, on behalf of the Historical Awareness Committee, okay, I was asked by the members to bring this in and show you people, you, you, the board allowed us to take that picture down, have it reproduced?
Yes.
Uh, for the school's use, and this is what part of what the project was about.
Now, was this clay on veterans' day?
It was, it was at school.
Yes.
The kids used, the kids used, the, the kids used it for their, their curriculum.
Wow, look at that, beautiful.
Yeah, so it is kinda cool now, you know?
Oh, my goodness.
And these are, this is some of the stuff that the kids were using to work with this, on this, you know, some of the, some of the, uh, questions that were asked of them and all, but... So this was, you know, they were able to, uh, as I said, to use this.
Brian, if you wanna come up and look at this.
It's really nice.
Look at that picture.
You can't see that.
It's a big difference.
They also restored that.
They did?
Yeah, so that way, you know, they were, um...
You can see all the faces.
When they took that out.
Do you know anybody in here?
Full lights on.
So...
What's the date on this?
Twenty eighteen, nineteen eighteen.
I think, yeah, nineteen eighteen.
So they could take that good picture in nineteen eighteen?
They did this, um, I mean, they, they used this for the, you know, the anniversary of World War One, so, the study this year of World War One, so... Anyways, uh, as I said, we wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to take that picture and have it won us.
That's beautiful.
The bullet hole, I see.
Can we swap, can we swap pictures with you now?
That's, that's more valuable.
I know.
That's incredible.
How good that is.
I'd like to know the questions, though, some, someone wearing overcoat, some are not, there's notice, there's no one wearing eyeglasses in the picture.
Really? Would you say nineteen eighteen was to say?
Nineteen eighteen.
And you had glasses back then?
Yeah, they did.
Hey, did, uh, where did you guys have that reproduced?
I believe she had it concrete camera.
Boys, they did a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Well, and I just wanna point out, Leo was also, uh, Memorial Day, he was, uh, mentioned, because he did a great job restoring one of the cemetery stones, that was used in the, recognized one of our flag citizens.
Yep.
Very, very nice.
Another one of my talents. I did start cemetery a few years ago.
Well, it was, uh, it was amazing, just...
And now you're gonna become a painter, right?
Good money in it.
Hey, now is the time, we're gonna accept your painting quote. Thanks, that was great, thanks for sharing that with us. You gotta spray it out, yeah.
Well, I thought you might wanna see this, you know?
Yeah, that's it.
Since you guys, um, allowed this to happen for the kids, so, you know, you're part of it.
Well done.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have something to talk to you about after, if you don't mind.
All right, I'm gonna go through the mailboxes, I'm gonna close public comment again, and I'm gonna look at the mailboxes a little bit.
Did we even ask Brian, Brian, did you have anything?
Um, all right, I'll tell him ahead.
Okay. Okay, I wanna read this, uh, letter, it was written to, uh, it was addressed to town administrator Dunbarren. Says, hello, representative of the town Dun, personnel, nice, as a senior citizen living in the town for many years, I want to compliment the young man with the reddish blonde hair and glasses, who has worked at the transfer station for many years now. He always says hi, helps me with my heavy bags, and doesn't get irritated when selfish people break bags, or take too long in the line gabbing, or when people try to leave old chairs without paying, I saw that today. Sometimes folks not nice to him, I've noticed that, I don't know his name, feel terrible about that, but he's always there, somewhat tall with glasses, usually right at the compactor. Would you kindly give him a little recognition or thank you? I'm sure it's, it's a thankless job, it must be very frustrating at times, maybe you could give him a ni, give him a nice certificate, or enjoy, or a certificate of thanks. Sincerely grateful, senior citizen. I think we all know who it is, and, uh...
Who is it?
It's Brad.
Brad Jobel.
Brad Jobel.
What's his last name? Jobel, J O B E L.
And we're gonna put this in his, um, pass it on to him, a copy on to him, we're gonna put a, post this to his personnel file, and kudos to that young gentleman, he's a, does an outstanding job. I've seen him in action, I mean, any senior citizen comes up, he'll, he'll, if he's doing something, he'll stop and help the senior citizen with the bag, so especially if they're handicapped or anything like that. He's a really, uh, he lives in Bo, but the thing is, he's been working there as a town employee for many years, uh, not a full-timer, per-timer, but I think he's a, he, he does a great job for us. So I'll pass it if you wanna...
Should we think about maybe giving him some sort of, uh, certificate from the selectmen on this, or...
We could, I guess, about ten point.
Okay, you do have something?
Yep.
I don't think it would hurt, I think, uh, you know, when somebody goes out of their way to help the public, week in and week out, it goes a long way, and, uh, I know he's been doing it for years steadily, so I think that, you know, if we, if we recognize some of these people, I think that it would go a lot further than even a pay raise would go, you know?
I do want to...
We gotta have Woody give it to him.
Has recognition if you want, just, you know?
This is what?
Yep.
This is, this is a nice letter.
Yep, I thought I'd just read that and, uh, share with you all, I thought it was a great thing. Okay. I'm glad you're still here.
Oh, why do now?
Just an FYI, just, uh, we got, uh, Don Larson gave us a heads up that, um, the Cook family at the cemetery, they think there's something wrong with their mother's grave.
Yeah, we've, that was the meeting tonight, we...
I just, there, I think, I'm sure the library, uh, the cemetery trustees are, uh, engaged in that, but it's, uh, the mother's stone was in the wrong place.
Now, that's not the one that you guys had met about at your last trustee meeting, or it is?
It's been continuous issue.
Okay.
It is.
Long story short, basically, Manchester Memorial put the core stones for the Golden Lot, six inches in the wrong spot, they need to be moved over, and someone mismarked it, uh, a trustee that's no longer here, uh, mismarked the, the wrong lot, so she was buried in the wrong lot. One lot over.
So this is the same situation that you dealt with at your trustee meeting?
Yep, so...
Again, it's just an FYI for us, and, uh, I'm, I'm just...
We have a solution.
You're engaged.
Yep, oh, yeah, no, we have a solution, and it's, uh, we have a number of solutions, but, uh, I'll take the cheapest one else that doesn't cost the town a lot of money.
Okay, the, um, just to let you know, the, uh, this is the mailboxes, the, uh, state of New Hampshire Department of Revenue is, uh, I'd say, in my opinion, I'm gonna put it, is, uh, kinda concerned that we did not ratify our election, we're one of several towns that did not ratify, and, uh...
That's, that's not that they're asking us to post this, so that if we wanna ratify in the future, they made some amendments to it, I think.
Yeah, but, uh, there was another email that we got.
Right.
Just to, just share what, what they're trying to do to us.
Basically, the, the district that our representative handles is about eighty towns.
Yeah.
Of eighty towns, there were eight towns that did not, that chose not to ratify, and she basically said that, um, because they feel strongly that there should have been ratification, without saying that you had to, um, that they would prioritize the towns that did ratify their vote, so that they know that there couldn't be any challenges or issues that arise prior to setting the tax rate, so, basically, they'll, it'll seventy-two towns, and then possibly the remaining eight towns in that order. So I don't know if that's...
That's discriminatory.
Yep.
It sure is.
Live free or die here.
Sure is.
And, and it was written that we didn't have to ratify it, we chose after a lengthy discussion not to, because we felt we'd done everything right on that date, so...
And for your information, we are on board with the requirements that are need, that's needed to set the tax rate, so that's not a piece that's holding up tax rate. Um, again, we'll, we'll be waiting for that final piece when they auditor, but, um...
Uh, this is an FYI, this is about milfoil, the gift that keeps on giving and taking, this is, tells how, how, uh, it's a...
How extensive it is this year.
It's awful, it's awful this year.
The water should be a lot better now.
Yeah.
You know, they said the milfoil was real bad last year because it was a dry year.
Yeah.
Now we have a wet year, and they say it's really bad again, so I'm not sure what kind of year we're gonna need for it to go down.
Well, no, last year was, it grew extensively because of the drought at the end, but they already done their milfoil work, so now we're paying the price now.
Right.
Oh, so it's the same, that's just showing the increase, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you're just, you're, you're getting the result of last year, just like if you look at trees right now, like lilacs or flowering trees?
Yeah.
I mean, they're stressed out this year, but it takes several years for a tree to actually show the stress from a drought.
Right.
Unfortunately, it didn't take us long to get the stress from the milfoil.
Right, right. Okay.
One more summary, get it?
What's the date on that?
On... Oh, it was today at one o'clock.
There you go. How'd it go, you gonna update us on it?
It went fine, I was hoping for another slack, but he wasn't there. But it's, uh, it was good, it was good.
Did you pass?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
They, they want me to have to work on the committee.
Oh, no, there you go.
What committee is this?
Ethics.
Oh.
It was a, it was an interesting session, I think it's, I got the, we had two transfer station employees, and I think as I worked, make sure they were participating. So I kept making, they talked about scenarios, and I kept turning the scenarios, so it was a transfer station issue. And, uh, and we had one police officer, it was kinda fun, it was really, the gentleman who hosted, what was his name?
Dave Allen.
Dave Allen was very, very good. All right, um, next, next week, recall that there was a discussion on new power lines, and the increased capacity of power lines coming through Dunbarren, and there's a potential of increased revenue coming through Dunbarren, but the, one of the companies competing for this, and is gonna meet with a tax assessors
Yep.
Uh, of Dunbarren, and, um, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's gonna be during the regular meeting of the Dunbarren Board of Assessors. I would like to have one representative of the select, board of selectmen be there.
I know I'm going.
Okay, then that's...
Where the other?
Okay, I wanted to go only because I have a lot of power line that goes through my property now, and they talked about widening them to their maximum width at a couple of these meetings, so...
Do you have Unitil or Eversource? I think they're Unitil.
I have Unitil for the road, but that power line's not Unitil.
Oh, it's not?
So there's a different company coming in, and they're widening them throughout the states at the max, and you'll see, they're replacing poles that were, that are not that old, to steel structures now, that are much taller, stronger, higher. Yeah, so...
Oh, my gosh, they're huge.
I kinda wanna follow this up and see what's gonna actually happen, they're gonna take our structures down, but they're also talking about widening to their full width.
Yeah, they've already met, the Eversource has already met with the highway department, and that's usually the department that they contact, um, so that there's coordination with the roads and the postings, or they, you know, um, if there's any issues that the road agent would have related to their roads.
All right, so as far as getting a representative, we, we have no problem, I think is, if you...
What's the date on that?
The date is gonna be June twentieth, Tuesday at six thirty P M.
June twentieth, six?
Six P M, I think.
Six thirty.
If, if you'd like to make it easier, you can post it, that the selectman, form of the selectman will be present, in case you wanna all be there, because...
Okay.
This could potentially impact the revenue of the town, where we have a utility appraiser that appraises these extra units on cell towers and, um...
And the appra, the, uh...
And the board of assessors are the authority and figure to work or talk about that, they do come before the selectmen, when there's a, a contract of some kind that they're considering, but that the, um...
Another thing I wanna make sure is, they're supposed to be notifying the layovers of additional work and whatnot, and it's supposed to be done more in the fall, from what I understood from our previous letter, but they're out there surveying all these lines right now, because they can see the people parked on our, our lines, so...
They wanna get that hundred-foot area, they wanna mark it and see where that is before.
Well, they're marking what lengths, and I think they're, they're marking the boundaries of their widening, so, um, I wanna know when they're gonna notify people.
But I, I also understand, this is only one of the, one of the potential contractors who was, who's been in on the...
That's right, yeah, so there's more than one.
Right, the other one that you're familiar with is the Northern Pass, that would be in this area, so the way I understood from the utility appraiser is that there's about seven or eight companies throughout the state of New Hampshire, depending on the region, you might have, you know, one, two companies that are in the seacoast, and then two companies are in central, and then, you know, that type of thing, so this is one company, along with, you'll see someone, uh, the Northern Pass is another one, and, um, they'll be competing to gate... they'll be competing to gate, to get that space, and each one of them will have a different method of, um, paying out for, uh, the towns that they run their lines through. So, and.
I, in fact, I think we got another, uh, today, just giving a heads-up to issue. Okay, um, so we'll be covered for good information.
Go post it.
Yeah, so, uh, we're attentive, uh, pay attention, bring back some information for the, for the, we can, we can, uh, fill this in on. Okay, um, this is just a memorandum going up to the, uh, departments, the payroll's gonna be completed early, uh, for the, for the July, uh, week. Speaking of Fourth of July, the transfer station will be closed, I just wanna make sure I put, uh, put it on the website.
It, it will, and it's gonna be put on the board out here, and obviously the town office is closed, so, but sometimes people don't associate those, the transfer station with, uh, you know.
Well, you can put "transfer station" slash "done."
I think it will be closed.
Yeah. What do you mean, it's Tuesday, it should be open, I always go to Tuesday mornings. They had a bonfire the other day, I think is, you know, wood, wood burning, it gives a campfire aroma, I was looking, where are the hot dogs out here? They're doing a cleanup on there. And it continues the transfer, it still continues to look, uh, every time I go in, they're, they're busy and they're working hard. Okay, this is, um, we had some wind damage, uh, how long ago was this thing?
Just recently, just noticed it.
Okay, take a look at the damage on the building, this is on the fire department, uh, safety office.
Yeah, it's actually the backside where the police department, um, enters or exits for emergency.
Now, how much you think that would cost to fix that, to pick that up? No, no, don't tell me, just write it down, I don't wanna, uh, the camera.
Am I supposed to be transparent, see public?
Right, but it's, yeah. I gotta, it's, it's gotta be some common sense, I'm worried.
Close bids.
I didn't see the number. Okay.
This is at the police department? Yeah, a, a little bit of, um, vinyl siding.
Paint on that building too with that picture.
That's vinyl siding.
No, I was looking at the stairs.
Yeah, the stairs are rough-shape, huh?
Yeah.
All right. All right, um, I'm gonna, just throw an idea. When we interviewed a, um, uh, one of the transfer station employees, he's also a general contractor, and not general contractor, general handyman, excuse me. He asked if he could, uh, um, do some handyman-type work. And I think when we discussed it, I think, when we, uh, when we hired him for the transfer station, we brought, I brought it up early, and we said, well, we'd like to see the quality of his work, maybe throw him a small job and see how, how well he does. And offer it to him, since it's a very small amount of money. So this may be an opportunity, I wanted to get some input from us, some other people. As a handyman.
You actually should get a few quotes, so.
I understand, okay. But it's a small amount, it's probably a very small amount of money.
I realize that, but it'd be nice to, 'cause we're always telling people to get us quotes on
Yeah.
whatever they're doing, so it wouldn't be bad.
Maybe you can invite him to quote on, on that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I can do that. Yeah.
Are you gonna do it as an employee, 'cause then it's just, you're just paying him a rate of pay, you don't have to.
No, he's gonna do it, uh, he's only part of the, he's a contractor.
He, he does it for a different rate of pay, Brian.
Just like we had, when we had Kyle, he was building inspector at one level, and then when we needed him to do handyman things, he had a different level.
Got you, okay.
But this would be a good test if he comes in reasonable, and, uh, if he's, uh, if we get some competitive business competitive, we could consider, um, our, so, okay?
Just a word to the wise, uh, you know, I'd, I'd like to try and hire people that are professional in their jobs and doing the individual jobs too, and not kind of a jack-of-all-trades if we can avoid it, because sometimes that comes back to bite you later on, depending on how it's done.
So exciting company, thank you.
Um, I don't know a lot of side company, but, you know, I'm just thinking. There's plenty of contractors installed, I just wanna make sure.
I was gonna say, it's plenty of.
Qualify the people that are bidding on it, so that we.
Is that big enough to even get call on qualifying?
Be tough to get anybody this summer to do most of any jobs, 'cause they're all getting booked up, so.
That's the problem, when you have a little thing like that. You don't, people don't even want, you know, people don't realize it, but we've gone out and give prices all the time, and sometimes when you get somewhere, it's when you say, I drove out here tonight after work to see this, you know, and so maybe your idea's a good one, you know, just, uh, but, you know, I don't see you're gonna get anybody who especially this time of year, somebody who's looking for work and does it for a living.
Yeah, it's two small sections of vinyl siding, I mean.
So why don't you keep everything transparent, I mean, you know,
Yeah.
wipe it off more than you can do right now with trying to get all kinds of quotes and this and that, trying to, they can be.
So, you know, so.
Cause Lutz right, I mean.
If you can get, ask him if he's interested in it, and then we can ask, if you know anyone else, ask them if they're interested in it. But let's not go, go for weeks on this, let's get it done in a week or two.
Yep, okay.
It's small potatoes, I mean.
Yeah, this is picking out.
Which, I, I've never been arrested, so what's the steps look like over there, what have they made of?
Oh, badly.
Well, we can fix it.
Looks like it's painted woodly, oh, it looks like maybe.
Yeah, it's just a wooden stairwell, that's not what we're looking to repair.
No, I understand that, yeah, I understand that.
They just need, they just need. They look like they're all peeling like anything else we have.
Yeah, it looks like they need to arrest some painter. Have the community worry about it.
Does it look like it's perpetuated, it looks like it's running down the line here. It's pretty rough, I look at.
Just gonna rub it everywhere, the video's running.
Okay, but, uh, just to say that, I, I think we had looked, uh, thought about getting someone to give us an idea of what they charge per hour to do various, various types of jobs, so that when something like this happened, you know, you could pick up a phone, say, hey, this is, you know.
That's what they.
Schedule it.
I have done that in the past, and it's not been cheap and, um, but.
All right, but, we, it's a small amount of money.
Yep, I'll start with that.
Start with that, and the thing is, um, let's see what he comes up with, I mean, if he comes up with those, uh, like a god, a whale, off-base quote.
Then I'll definitely make some more.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, last week I gave, uh, we had a dissent electronically, this is, I'm moving on to a new subject. Uh, this is for the police department, uh, as far as, uh, additional special duty, uh, hour of projects. And, uh, I read through it, and I have my own opinion of it, and there's no one from the police department to defend it or talk about it, so I like to recommend that we table it for a week, for the next week, the next meeting.
Tell you, tell you some representative.
I'd say we table it till somebody comes in forth and wants to, um, talk about it, or at least, uh, present it to us, I'd say it's tableed till further notice, until we have, wants to.
Dan Scoop did say that he plans on being present at the twenty-ninth, the meeting of the twenty-ninth.
It's nice to have.
I didn't know he had said that, so.
Yeah, he just told me today, he wasn't available today.
I have my own opinions on this, and, uh, I'll leave it at that for now.
What was the date for the one he could meet?
Twenty-ninth.
Right, okay.
And when you were at it, could you see if you could get some more yellow tape for these, uh?
Okay, another, it's an, it's an FYI, uh, and I need a consensus from a selectman. Here's one of these ornamental trees out here, it's got significant woodpecker damage on one limb. And, uh, I'm not taking bids for it, but the limb is penetrated on both, uh, top and bottom sides, it's gonna, it's a potential to fall off and destroy the tree. We have a town employee who will just take care of that one branch and, uh, professionally take it down free.
A branch?
A branch.
Which tree are you talking about?
Uh, one of these ornamental apple trees up front. It's got a branch about this thick, and it's got two penetrations from the top and bottom, from the, from an ant, from the, uh, from a bird.
Woodpecker. Woody.
So she's gonna, she'd be more than happy to take it down, just start on Linda. Big town, um, so I have no problems with doing that, I just wanna get a consensus.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I guess I don't either, oh yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, that's, I'll leave it there, I'll give it approval, uh, Lean, you can just say, go for it.
No, no, go for it, okay.
Take a look at it on the way out, I guess.
In fact, I'll point it out to you, it's pretty aw, pretty awesome, really. And she started putting her finger in there, like, there's bugs coming out of the little hole. So the, the, uh, the word is having a male out every day out of it.
Well, I need to eat too, you know.
I'm sorry, yeah, I know.
I already signed that one.
All right.
That's just FYI.
Yeah.
These are things that we're monitoring.
Okay, let's see, that was in there, okay. Can you tell me about Comcast, Lean?
Can you refresh?
Chris from Comcast has gone silent in my contact, uh, Comcast of the company.
That's Jim Gola kicking us up
Okay.
to speed with his pursuing Comcast for the town.
Okay.
He's not having a lot of luck with it, but he's not ready to give it up, so he's gonna continue to try to reach out to them. So that we have options besides high-speed internet.
Okay, but it seems like the, uh, some squeaky wheel, uh, J R Hole has had fiber optics installed on a street already for this email. So it looks like, uh, uh, Dunbar Telephone was taking advantage of some of the pre-existing wiring that was out there that they talked about.
They actually ran some of those, and they've been working really, you've seen them, Dunbar telephone.
I haven't seen them on my road yet.
Well, they're, but they're on Montalona, they've been running down, um, Morse Road and Twist Hill, they go out your way?
But on mine, it still sucks.
The fiber optic?
I don't, I don't know, if they've done, if they've done fiber optic, it's still better than it was when it was regular copper wire, 'cause it, my internet sucks.
No, fiber optic, you have to have a separate hardware, new hardware in the house.
Oh, there's nothing, nothing in the house, I haven't had it notified or anything, so then they must not come down my end.
I think that they're going towards
Yeah, they're probably gonna go south first.
Yeah.
I think more people are gonna have to complain to get service, because I don't see them working on my road, I do see them on Twist and now.
It'll probably be a commercial rate, I don't know, I can't imagine.
And I'm not sure, but even Verizon service has been terrible lately.
You're gonna pay for more fiber optic?
I would hope not.
Oh, you're. Paying now for nothing.
Oh, you'll be paying more for it.
Yeah, but you pay nothing, huh?
The fiber, uh, why would I pay more for fiber optic, fiber optic is through Dunbar Telephone, interest is through G S I.
Well, it depends what they have set up through G S I.
This is a business.
I think so.
They're gonna have to. I, nothing's gonna go down, I guarantee that.
Yeah.
I guarantee that. Um, and I can't comment on the prices, we have no knowledge.
No, I don't know.
And, uh, so.
I don't know if the, uh, if our cell power here in town is down, but the cell service the last couple of months has just been atrocious in town, I don't know.
Is Verizon, or?
Yeah, I do.
Verizon's that, so, I don't know.
It's better.
It stinks over my end anyway.
Yeah, it's terrible, but it used to be, you know, negotiable at our, at our.
Would be, because the leaves are on the trees now?
Yeah, that's true, leaves are on trees.
Okay, we have, uh, I'm gonna continue on, uh, it's, um.
Do you do that?
We, we, we did that, right.
Well, it usually is one act.
Oh yeah, we, we, we're being flexible tonight.
All right.
I'd rather be flexible. All right, three letters to, uh, three of the people presenting the checks tonight. This is ours on the comment, we, remember we asked for that?
Oh, yes, yeah.
And so I think we can sign these. Though the dates, ones dated May twenty-fifth, and ones made a date of June fifteenth.
Okay.
Should, should we, I, I think it doesn't matter to me too much.
If, if you'd like, um, take me a second, we'll reprint it.
Okay, just two of, just two of. The, the one going to, uh, Murphy is fine.
Okay, and the other two have the wrong?
The, there's the dates.
Okay.
Sorry.
This is all, this is the letters.
I have to admit, the advertising, I mean, I, I was seeing the advertising for that, so comment, all the way down at Lowe's in, um, Concord.
Yeah.
And, uh, Don was telling me, the Concord Police Department was, were picking up some of the signs where they shouldn't have been. So several of them were picked up at the police Dunbar.
Yeah.
Isn't that?
Two for you gentlemen to sign?
No, we're gonna have to do them again, May twenty-fifth, there's two of them wrong.
Oh.
That's what Lean's going to do. These two here. Attention detail.
I heard you saying that, I thought you were, I didn't realize it was all the way into May, I thought it was just to take.
I just need the name.
Sure. This is a good one. So waiting on those two to come back to us. Have you seen, um, just as far as, um, I wanna make sure that, um, Woody is, uh, uh, from the transfer station is making sure that, um, this is an FYI, he's asking for, uh, Lean asked for hours, so the thing aside, he can, she can track her hours, remember he?
Well, he did give us the schedule, he was two hours a day, and now we're just asking for a schedule that is four hours a day, right?
I wanna get that clarified.
Okay.
Because I keep seeing it on the, on email, I, I don't see responses from the gentleman. Lean, could you just, uh, ex- expand on, um,
on the scheduling?
What information do you need, and why you need it, and why has it been a problem?
Um, well, I just feel that where he's only at, um, twenty hours, if the department requires supervision or someone to go to in case of an emergency, it would be helpful for the town office to have the schedule so that we know when he's available, and, uh, when, you know, we can refer to that issue, problem, or know how to reach him. Versus when he's not there, to make sure that somebody else is available, and that his staff knows that there's someone that they can reach out to, you know, in that case. And there's, there just seems to be little or no communication between his availability, his staff, his hours, and communicating that to the town office.
Now, you, had you sent that letter to him? By email?
Yes, this, yes.
And then, how long ago was that?
He, uh, this one here, I, he's only responded, um, to the first week, which I thought was going to work out well. And then I sent him another inquiry this past Monday, and he has not responded back. And I understand that, uh, he's shorthanded, uh, he has doctor's appointments, whatnot, that will interfere, but I think he has a ballpark idea of what his schedule will be, and based on what the, um, his work schedule's supposed to be like, supposed to be four hours in bulk time, unless there's a, uh, doctor's appointment that interferes with that bulk time, so that he can try to acclimate himself back into a regular work schedule, but to have it on a five-day period, so there'd be one day, obviously, that he's either doing administrative work, because it's not, they're only open four days a week. But it's al, always helpful to know that I can reach out to him when it's not on his personal time versus when I know he'll be at, at the, either at the transfer station working, or.
So we set that this Monday?
Correct.
Okay. We'll give him, give him a little time to respond, I guess, he just.
I just, this, this, we're now Thursday, and I didn't have, I don't know what his sk, I did not know what his schedule was this week, so. I mean, I, I'm, I think I was very professional in the way I just asked going forward, it would be nice to have some open communication.
Maybe send him a little update and ask him if he had a chance to look at that yet, 'cause we'd like to know the hours.
Okay.
And schedule.
Okay.
And maybe, make a point that you did not get it this week.
Yep.
And I think it's Monday's gonna be here.
Yeah.
And say, I wanna make sure that you received this, please let me know if you received this email, and then is, uh, I'd like to have it for Monday, uh, first thing Monday, before Monday begins, I'd have it for Monday.
'Cause if he's working Saturday, then he should know what his schedule's gonna be for the following week.
Exactly. I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I've personally seen him working down there Saturday and on Wednesday, so.
Right, but the thing is, he's a supervisor, he should be, at least forward his information forward, I think he, that's a reasonable request.
You know, uh, look, does have read receipts and
Oh, I do.
delivery receipts and all that stuff, so you can know that when they actually read it, so.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Document.
I use that often.
Okay.
Good idea.
That's trash. Okay, I'm almost out of stuff. Thank you, Laura. I am, I, I'm on stuff. Okay, good enough. Um, can I, I just like to follow up on painting, I think is, I, I feel disappointed that the, uh, we didn't ask the right questions. And, uh, I feel like I got set up for, uh.
Think we're not gonna let you do it, but.
I don't think so.
Lesson learned, you know?
It's, it's really, it was, it was, to me, it was a little disappointing to see that prices are so, uh, high as I, as I thought they were gonna be, I never thought they'd be this high.
Well, I think, Bob, last year, you were looking to try to get volunteers to do it because you were familiar with it.
We thought we could get someone, yeah.
Right, because, and that you thought it would really save a lot.
I mean, I heard we knew it wasn't gonna happen.
Right.
But this building and Jeff's building was a possibility, you know?
I mean, I can reach out to the police department, I know that they have a community service group that periodically will come in and do.
I'm pretty.
Library's out of question.
But I did say, when I walked around last winter, I told you this building had a lot of damage and that building had a lot of damage. So I thought it might come out, I didn't think we had enough money in the budget and I thought.
Oh.
It'd be a period of time where we could catch up with getting the buildings so that we're just maintaining and not restoring.
With the lead paint possibilities, I think, um, being, being where, I know you can work on your own house if it's older than nineteen eighty-seven. But when you work on a public building, there might be some.
They don't have any standards. Yeah, I, I, I had guys that did lead paint.
They do, they do have standards because if you.
You could be certified lead paint if they don't have any standards.
That's, that's the fire department, when they did the renovations there, we put those standards in the, in the bid, in the, the boilerplate language, cause I know I did the research on, regarding asbestos and lead, they have, there are certain things when you carry on a public building, they have to do.
Okay, so the bottom line, we have to.
We'll check into it.
Yeah, we have, we have to, we have to determine, uh, what we want and the thing is, then we'll, because I hate to put it off the next year, I'd like to get something done this year and, so I, I don't wanna put in the bid, just say, no, I couldn't do anything this year, I just don't wanna let sit for.
Well, as Bob said, this building, we did have one reasonable quote and maybe we could have, um, those three companies or anybody else if, if we invite, we'll make a quick spec up and have them bid on the entire four sides of this facility, maybe we can get one building done, as Bob said, instead of, you know, two sides of that, two sides.
Cause you have two, you have two bids that are kind of, oh, just a little over seven dollars.
Yeah.
One's seven thousand, one's seventy-four hundred.
So maybe we use the painting for all of our miscellaneous painting for all the buildings and do this one building that Bob spoke about, we'll know this building is done.
And, 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 you know, and then you can move to the other one.
Right, and then move to the other ones, that's need be, I had, uh, one more question for Lean before we go too far, have we had any response from Score Construction after our letter?
No, no, today is Wednesday, I believe the letter went out last Tuesday.
Okay, we give them thirty days, I think, right?
Right.
Okay, I was just wondering, if you do see a response, can you CCS?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And it was addressed from our lawyer?
Correct, it came from her office, we thought it was best to.
Yeah, we sent it, so. Yeah. Alright, I just wanted to see if we had an update, that's all I had. And I'm gonna just address the selectmen, anything else with more, Bob?
Okay, I didn't know if you were gonna start with administrative. Yeah, I am, do you know one thing, I had a couple and I can't remember what one of them was, the one of them is, I, I am your representative to the, uh.
Pass the.
No, the.
Joint Loss.
Joint Loss Committee, which met yesterday unfortunately, for some reason, like, you know, wires are crossed, but, I don't know if one of you would wanna be appointed to the Joint Loss Committee, only so, because they go through the different buildings and they look at things that may be failing versus, so you get an idea that it's not just about paint, there's some things that we have to address. So the more of us that have an understanding of what we're talking about, I think the better it is. So, I mean, that's just an option, if someone wants to be appointed to that, I don't mind stepping aside, letting them do that and get an idea of, you know, cause you end up going through all these buildings.
Okay.
Dave? I already asked my question for Bo, it was about Score Construction. I'm good and I'm gonna try and make sure to make that tax assessors meeting with the.
Right, and it, it looks like if we make a public announcement, we, we all three can, that'd be no issue.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, and, I'm, I'll call the town administrator separately, you know, anything?
No.
And, uh, co-chef, I know you, we have the tape here from, from, you can use for reference and a tape recorder, so if there's any problems, let us know. We'll, we'll try to make sure we, we'll help you with the, as you scrutinize the minutes, make sure we sort, do I hear a motion, gentlemen?
I don't really have a tape in there, you know? I don't really have a tape in there.
I'm sorry. He's making fun of me, I'm my age, well.
I also wanted to, I forgot to let you guys know that the teachers and the students did really enjoy that picture. They did, they made a big deal about it, so that's why I wanted to bring it in to show you guys.
Well, the faces on there, it's amazing to be able to look at their expressions, you know, from nineteen eighteen.
Yeah, very, 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 well, you look at that, you can look at the big pictures, like.
I never would imagine that you would've gotten it that large.
Well, and the clarity, you know, the expression on the face.
Well, by the way, I just have one other comment and that's, uh, it's very, it was, I had read that email, it had to do with us ratifying, you know, what happened at the town meeting. And, you know, for all sense of purposes, I think the selectmen at that meeting did the right thing, the legislative body decided what they wanted. And I think that we're opening a Pandora's box, having another public meeting to ratify something that allows people that were opposed to it to come to a meeting, voice their concern, have minutes to that meeting, and I think it just convolutes that and it takes away from local control, takes away from people's ability to attend a meeting where they can vote versus trying to weather a storm where you won't get many elderly, you won't get many people that have kids that wanna leave their home, so, you know, they have things in place for the moderator to do this and he did his job. And the selectmen did their job and the legislative body did their job and I just wanna stay with that, you know?
And, uh, our previous moderator agreed with our decisions as well, and he was up to meet it, so.
Yeah, and so, anything is, I, if there's any discrimination referenced in our, our tax, determination of our tax, well, I'd like to make sure the boys are aware of it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Do you wanna sign a letter from the lawyer to remind the department, oh, you know, that they're not supposed to discriminate?
That might be interesting. Okay, uh, do I hear a motion from this, one of the selectmen?
I'm gonna motion to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-eight.
Certainly. All in favor?
Aye.
Eight fifty-eight is.